You've dialed in to Bucks and Brews. You might hear something.
You can use.
Like tips under cash or tips on the suds.
You're gonna wanna use.
The smarts of these stuff.
Cause they know the brews.
And they know the box and they know they can't help the stubborn fucks.
So listen up, cause shit's not funny.
And save yourself some beer money bucks. And bruise.
Bucks and.
Bucks. And bruise.
Bucks and bruise.
Welcome back to Bucks and Brews. So we decided to do a twofer tonight, Nick.
We did, but nobody else is gonna know that, cause this will be in the queue for a while.
It will be. Um, hit us with your new normal opening that we missed on the first episode tonight.
As always, guys, thank you so much for joining us. Like, subscribe, share, tell your friends, tell your family. We appreciate you listening to us.
What are you drinking tonight, Nick?
Tonight, I am finishing up some Bush Light Peach.
Alright.
Cheers. And you?
Uh, well, I had, uh, I have nothing now.
Say.
I'm out of drinks, uh, but I did have vanilla Java Porter, salty caramel porter and, uh, oatmeal cream pie.
Nice.
Earlier, so, um, we kinda wanted to do a little bit of venting and a little story time, cause
Yeah.
We have not caught up too much lately. Um. So. I know you have some stories.
I have a few.
Um, let's, let's start with your stories.
So I did my first ever school board education meeting.
Oh, I did see something about this.
Yes. Alright, so yesterday, yesterday was a Monday.
Yes.
Um. And would before my kid got out of school, there's, there's a very. Uh, there, there's a lady who, who somehow feels that she's okay with talking with me and that's fine. And she said, hey, you should come. There was people bullying some kids last time and they didn't feel safe. And you said you'd be there. And I was like, deal. Happened to be yesterday, which is a Monday. I'm like, shit, I have a real estate event, but I'll, I'll stop that because I'll always go for people.
Yes.
By the end of it, I didn't regret it. They just didn't need me, right? Granted, I didn't feel needed, right? Um. I, I lost chances of my real estate aspect of things, but. So I get there and, um. Alright, so there, there's a guy. There's a guy who, uh, who had posted something in a Facebook group about like, oh, I'm pretty big. I'll be there, front row. Blue, you know, and, uh, I'm not gonna let this, I'm not gonna tolerate this. And I was like, cool. I liked it. Showed up. I'm, I'm a very early person. He was early. Now, mind you, I didn't know how this works. You grab a, you grab a thing and it has the itinerary of what's going on right next to it. So what I thought was a sign in sheet.
Okay.
Okay. Now, this is a sign up sheet.
Okay.
For wanting to speak.
Okay.
And, uh, so then they, they go over some bullshit and then they have.
I've been to several school board meetings, mind you.
Yeah.
There was just, who wants to talk? And we just got up and talked.
Mind you, 28 people had signed up for this and I was the second person there. So I just.
You'd signed up.
Thought about my shit, not even reading, right? So first guy gets, so anyway, step back over. I, I walk in and I see this guy and I, granted, here I'm wearing a full rainbow hat.
Yep.
I'm wearing Dawn's new shirt. That says, people of quality don't fear equality, right?
Yeah.
Because I am kind of boasting it up a little bit.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I look at this guy and I was like, ah, I think you're the guy I have to sit next to. Why is that? I was like, cause I think we're here for the same thing. What's that? Damn dude, why you like?
Why are you so angry?
I was like, dude, I was like, cause apparently you and I aren't gonna put up with assholes. And he's like, huh? Oh yeah, here's some bullying shit happening. I seen your post and he goes, oh, well, I guess I should have seen your rainbow hat or whatever.
Oh, my God.
Jesus, bud. I was like.
Thank you for playing the game.
First of all, calm down there, Billy. Like, I was like, you know, and he's like, yeah, you, you know, you got some size. I mean, I got some heights on you. And I was like, that has nothing to do with any part. Like, I was like, Jesus, bud. Like, you have heights. What does that have? Like, alright, cool. And, uh, so he gets up and he's like, and he, he was kinda weird and he's like, I don't like bullies and goes into like this very like undertaker type thing. And he's like, no, I stood up and I said, you know, hey, I'm Nick Watkins. Have a, I'm a proud parent of a kid that goes to this school. Um, you know, I'm here for the same thing the last guy was for. I heard there were some things that were going on. I was cordially invited to come here and make sure kids felt comfortable. I don't, I don't do bullying. I don't teach my kid to bully. I expect that you guys don't bully and I expect that you won't either. And I expect the rest of everybody here to act appropriate and let anybody speak that chooses to speak. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you for your time. And I just said, that's literally like all I said, right? Nice. And I'm, I'm a big dude, right? Like, if you, if you don't know, I, I just am. I'm a big fricking dude. And so I go sit right front row, like legs kinda squished in these like little chairs and shit. And I sat there and, um, you know, then the fun fucking happens. Okay? So the first part, they do this recognition thing for one of the schools. And I was like, that's cool. Like good. They, they recognize a lot of great things happening. And then they took a two second recess and then we had open, open talk. 28 people, as I said, talking. And, uh, I, I, I remember I, I just basically play by playing my wife. Okay?
Yeah.
Um. I said, you know, uh, so I was like, man, there's, so it was like six fifteen. And this didn't start till six thirty. And I, again, I'm early. I was like, man, there's eight kids here already. Like from what I just, I didn't turn around. I was like, I didn't know, I didn't know this is what kids did lol.
Um, yeah. Cause how many board meetings did you go to as a kid?
None.
Yeah, me either.
I said, I said, shit, I didn't do anything. I was like, fuck, we were losers. I was like, is this what, I was like, is this what rich kids do lol? I was bowling and these kids were out fighting for shit.
Dude, I'm gonna tell you right now, the board meetings I went to were a godwin and we had students that showed up to those board meetings and they weren't rich.
Yeah. They say, but you know what I'm saying? Like, I'm, I'm just like, what the fuck? I was like, uh, I, I, I go, do I, do I, do I get to curse and shit? I, and, and here's the thing. I was like, I understand my job. I understand why I'm here. Um. And I was like, I, you know, this is, I was asked to security, right? Like I wasn't asked to do anything else like, and, uh, she's like, my wife's giving me advice. She's like, I wouldn't give them any reason to diminish the message. And I was like, it's not my fucking job. I don't care about the message. That's your, your job's to get that out type of thing, right? Like, and I was like, can I curse? Like I, I have no idea. Like, you know, I'm saying like, can I, how do I do this? Right? Uh, and I told her, I was like, my job is to make sure the message is said. Um, and not to deliver it, right? I was like, I was like, but I get the joy out of telling people to fuck off, right?
But can I say fuck off?
Like, and she said something or whatever. Um, and I told her I was gonna be, I'm gonna, so this is a thing I'm gonna do and I think I'm gonna do it very, very soon. I'm gonna pay for my doctorate. Okay. Cause I think we talked about this in an episode. Like I can pay three grand and have a fucking doctorate from a different country. That way I can walk around.
And say I'm Dr. Nick Watkins.
I am, right? Because on the, on the board of education for us, there's like three doctors up there. They all say doctor. They make sure that it's on their fucking thing. I'm just gonna be doctor, right? Like just so that way people think that I have.
Or recognizes Dr. Nick Watkins.
That's exactly it, right? There's so much to it. Um. And she's like, you can put your name on anything. I was like, no, these are fucking acrylics. Like they're really nice name tag, name placards and shit. Um. Let's say, trying to figure out what JD means. We still didn't figure that out. One of the guy's name was Craig Johnson. And I said JD. I'm like, does he go by JD? I don't, I don't know.
I don't know.
But let's say, uh, it, it, there was like a hundred and something people there. Um, I figured to her, I was like, I figured five people would show up to this shit. Like, who the fuck goes to a board of education meeting? Like, I, I didn't know. Um. And then. Oh, a bunch of, a bunch of them did leave after the recognition. So like some of them brought their families from the teacher.
Just to be recognized.
Yeah, you know, and so like, hey, congrats. They did awesome. I was like, that's awesome. Um. And then I texted, I was like, Jesus, some of these kids are fighting for fucking church and school.
Oh, yeah.
Um, they wanna be able to like pray whenever the fuck they want.
Which they're totally fucking allowed to do. You just can't force everybody else to do it.
Well, like, and they were saying that they have to have a teacher be part of the club in order for them to do it and recognize, but the school won't allow that. And so it's really hard for them. And I was like, then, so you wanna be a recognized club? You can't just be a club. And to me, like my brain is just always about like, well, fuck, we can get away with it without having to be like, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put it on my resume of.
They wanted to be some kind of official thing.
Right. I was in the Christian Brotherhood of whatever.
And if they wanna do that, Hudsonville Unit in Christian is not far from there. Go be in the club.
It's kinda what I was like. And so in my brain, like I ran through a lot of things. I was like, man, you, you can go to a Christian school, kid.
You absolutely can.
You can go do whatever. Um, told her this shit was whack. Um, and then I said, fuck, this is crazy. It started getting out of hand. Um. So one guy stands up and he starts asking if we are educating or.
Indoctrinating.
Indoctrinating people. And then.
Cause that's their new fucking buzzword.
And then goes on, and he talks about global warming. And he talks about how everybody that talks about this global warming is absolutely wrong. He remembers back in the fifties when they're talking about an iceberg cap was gonna melt and it's gonna flood everything. We wouldn't be here. Well, that didn't happen. Al Gore has been saying a bunch of stuff and he's made $330 million off of, um, global warming.
Did anybody stand up and goes, are you just pulling this shit out your ass?
No, no, nobody. And, well, cause I was gonna let everybody speak. That was my, I think, I want people to think. So that's one thing I'll, I'll talk about here in a second. Let me finish this. But, um, you know, he, he, he goes out and then he talks about carbon, carbon dioxide. Okay? And he's like, hmm, carbon dioxide. And he talks about how New York won't be selling, uh, gas stoves anymore. And you'll never be able to find a gas stove in New York very soon. And carbon dioxide, people don't realize. And I was like, you do know that you get carbon monoxide poisoning from, I didn't, I didn't say, I was like, it's a, it's, it's a gas that doesn't get fully combusted and creates carbon monoxide. Like, holy shit, you don't know the difference of what the fuck you're talking about. Like my brain was just like.
And these people just listen to Fox News.
This was fucking.
Fox News just gives them scary shit.
And the funny thing is like, I don't listen to anything, but like, I just, I'm smart enough to understand like you're, you're fucking stupid. And it was just funny to me. Um, and so I texted her all, all of this. I'm giving her play by play of a bunch of shit. Um, they're trying to ban a book in our area. Now I wanna get on that. But so let me go back. When I tell you, before I get to this book banning, when I tell you, I was there to make sure that people felt safe, comfortable, whatever. David, I happen to be wearing pride stuff, but if a pride person or whatever said something.
You would've said something.
I'm not gonna let you attack somebody else. I'm not.
Right.
I am there to keep peace. I am there to make sure that nobody feels like their voice isn't allowed to be heard.
If I would've stood up with that idiot talking and said, dude, go fuck yourself. He would've told me to sit down and shut up.
Hundred percent, right? Like this isn't your fucking spot. And that's, that's their job up top, right? Um. And people don't, so the problem is, is when you go in wearing a pride hat and pride shirt. Oh, another one of us liberals. No, ma'am. No, don't get me fucking, mm-mm. Like you don't know me, right? Oh, I've seen you before. Yeah, we, we've met. Oh, I didn't know you were, you don't know, right? That's the thing. You don't know. David, I have voted more Republican than most people ever fucking vote. That's on a liberal or democratic side, right? Like, no, I am not your guy. Okay? Oh, you, oh, you're a Republican. No, buddy. No, like, guess what? I'm completely fine with these guys doing whatever the hell they like. No, I'm not your buddy either. Okay? Like, well, I'm definitely not a fucking liberal. Like, that's the thing. I am my own person with my own thoughts and my own mind. Like you're completely, like you're, you're way over here, you're way over here. I don't care. So I wanna get to a point that really pissed me off. So I, I might go, I, I said, I hope I never go to another one. Cause what a fucking waste of my night and what a waste of my life. Um, I didn't feel used and needed. Um, but what I will say is every conservative that I heard stand up said, I don't think boys should be allowed in girls bathrooms.
Mm-hmm.
Girls. You know, no, no guys should be in girls bathrooms. And in my brain, and every time it's all I heard. Because again, I'm, I'm on this big fight with my wife about sexism. I don't know. I don't care if you're talking about trans aspects of things. Why did you not once mention that a girl should never be in a boy's bathroom? Why does that not fear you? Right? Why does that not concern you? Why is it only a boy? And so like, that's how my brain thinks. It's like, no, no, no. If you're gonna stand up here and say, hey, no boy should be in a boy or girl's bathroom. No girl should be in a boy's bathroom. Okay, we have some type of a open conversation where you actually understand that this is actually you. You're thinking that somebody's playing around, right? When you say it one way, you're, you're saying this is playing around, right? Like, anyway, and so I, it just kinda, it kinda caught my eye or caught me, right? And I was like, this is, again, speak what you're supposed to be saying and do it with, with all you have to do. So. Alright, there's a book that they're trying to ban. I don't fucking know this book. They held it up. I don't care. This lady gets up. And this is gonna be a little graphic, is what she says. My, this is, okay. And, uh, she goes, alright, got this story. I'm gonna say Mr. T will call it uh, America. Definitely was a name. And then, I don't know, Connie. I don't fucking remember the little, the little girl wasn't part of it.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Mr. T's standing there and, you know, America comes over and Mr. T's like, oh, you know, I, I got a real, I got a real neck pain. I'm gonna pour a vodka and coke. Gives, gives America some vodka and coke. Okay? And I was like, what the fuck? Like first of all, drunk nicks like, bring it up sober as hell. But like, I'm like, who the fuck drinks vodka and coke? Like, you gotta use rum and coke. That's a whole different.
Yeah.
But like, alright, we're, we're.
Vodka and Sprite.
Right. They say vodka and coke. And then gives it to, gives it to America. And then Mr. T, you know, gets a cramp in his neck and he's like, hey, America, you should come rub my neck. And so then, where is, so then Mr. T lays on his back and I'm sitting on his butt and rubbing his neck. And then leads to the next thing. And she keeps like kinda going. You know, then Mr. T gives the boy a porno magazine and says, read this. Alright, porno magazine and this kid read, and then, you know, it becomes so much more. And she gets into like some graphic type of things. Okay. And well, you know, now, now Connie gets told, shut up. Th- this is how, this is how it is. And America's used to it. So it's, it's whatever. They're, they're grooming them, um, from this. Okay? Mind you, and this is how my brain works versus the other people. And this lady basically talks about how this boy is getting molested, uh, raped, whatever, all of it. And she kinda goes into fucking details of, of some, you know, it's not, but it's just, it was really fucking weird. Okay? And so I was like, alright, it is kinda weird. Okay? And then she finished it up with, well, you know, it could trigger some kids. It could do this. And I was like, see? Well, so it took her, we were supposed to have three minutes. She went God knows how long.
Yeah.
And they didn't stop her, which I thought they failed that and they needed to.
Well, they didn't stop her because it supported their.
Now.
Beliefs.
And they're just chicken shits. That's why the school board, like they're just chicken shits. That's why I'm gonna be on it. And, uh, so then she's like, oh, you know, could do this and this. And I was like, but you're also missing the point that it could tell a kid that is having this happen that it's not okay. That, hey, this isn't normal. Hey, this is the type of thing. That's on my brain. Now, mind you, she said, and I, and I mostly quote, this isn't a passage from this book, but it's like many other books that are trying to get in here. And this should be removed, not banned, not whatever, just removed. And I was like, wait, did you really just write a fucking full novel to teach me? You couldn't, like the book you wanna ban, you couldn't fucking draw out exact words, scriptures, what are you gonna call?
Because there's nothing in that book that should be banned.
You couldn't fucking like, holy shit, you really, you really listened to a fucking kid getting raped, a kid doing whatever? Because it's like books that you want not in there, but you have a specific book you're fighting to not have.
Which has nothing to do with the story she told.
You couldn't pull a fucking passage and said, this is why, right here, this verbatim.
There's nothing in that book.
It literally said, you know, some, he made some little seven year old suck him off. Like, holy shit, I understand you don't want that book in there, but you literally, you sat at home, you wrote a full fucking graphic novel, made all of us listen to it. And you could've literally just gone straight fact.
You know what probably was in that book? Two men holding hands. That's probably what it was.
It blew my mind. And so like, I let Courtney have it for like the rest of the night. I was like, this lady literally wrote her own fucking book when she could've quoted a book she's trying to stop.
This is the problem that we have with these people. And, and your school board is no different than most of the school boards in Ottawa County. They, they've elected these Ottawa impact assholes that run around talking about grooming. Well, and talk about, I don't want a man going in a woman's restroom. Okay. First off, if it's a trans woman, they're not going in that restroom to touch anybody. They're going in there to take a leak.
Right.
Okay. And let's just dispel with that right now. You're not trying to protect anyone. You're just trying to scare that little trans kid back into the fucking closet. So you don't have to deal with them.
And, and I get what their point is trying to do, right? Like I understand that. Um. And I can't tell you, I can't tell you to force, you know, I, if the change has to be that, hey, there's a gender neutral bathroom that locks single stall and nobody else can get in. And everybody wants to go into Ken, Ken, and the teacher has to wait three extra minutes for three people to go change. I don't give a shit. Like, hey, if, if this is causing that big of a fight for one percent, like one percent doesn't get the equal vote, right? Um. But there needs to be something and there needs to be a way to make sure everybody is safe and secure. Again, I'm there to make sure you're safe, you're secure, you're, you're comfortable, right? I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make my whole event around you, but I'm gonna let you know, hey, you're welcome here, right? Like, if you choose to open your mouth, right? That's, that's a you problem, right? Um, but no, I just, dude, I'm, I can't believe this lady wrote this entire thing when she could've quoted a book.
This is the problem we're having with a lot of these conservatives, is they're making shit up. And a lot of them are too stupid to know that they're making shit up because they're doing, you know, they're talking about what they heard on Fox News, which is just total horse shit.
No.
You know? There's nothing to fear from a little trans kid. They're not doing anything to you. There's no indoctrination going on. The indoctrination that's going on is, you know, done in the really scary places like the church. I would be way more concerned with my kids being left alone with a preacher than I would with a trans person. I haven't seen all of these accusations about drag queens molesting kids. But I've seen a whole lot of preachers, fathers that have molested kids. It's unfortunate. But that's what happens. That's the, the news cycle that has come around. I mean, you know, there's a great movie out called Spotlight that details the Boston, I think it was the Boston Globe's, uh, expose on the Catholic Church of Boston and how they kept shuffling fathers around because, you know, these, these pastors kept raping children. And those are the, the predators you need to worry about. Not necessarily the little trans kid that doesn't wanna get their ass kicked because, you know, they identify, you know, they were born with female parts, but they identify as a, a boy. And the, the other thing they talk about is, you know, they're, they're going through some change where they're cutting off their breasts and shit. That shit isn't happening either. You're not able to cut off your breasts until, you know, you're an adult. If that's what you decide to do as an adult. No 13 year olds going, I don't wanna be a girl anymore. Cut off my boobs.
Can't get a vasectomy.
No. You can't.
Um, you know, and so, uh, one other guy stood up, said, there's only two genders. I wanna be clear about this. Here's how we describe genders. XX and XY. Are those genders, David?
No, they are not.
So.
They're chromosomes.
Thank you, fuck. Like I, I said, and I was like, I wanted to be like, I think you, you, you pronounce chromosomes wrong, fuckhead.
Yeah.
Because like, sure, if you believe there's only two genders, right? That's completely fine. Okay?
You can believe that.
But like, let's call it, and again, I have a hard time with the they, the, you know, whatever, right? Like, but I tell Courtney, never once do I go, oh, the guy David, right? You know what I'm saying? Like, Courtney, David, hey, right? If I say, hey, man, I say, what's up, man?
But you say that to girls.
I say it to girls. Alright, like I was golfing, right? Let's say I was golfing, uh, golf outing. Uh, yeah, whatever it was. Alright, right? Alright, guys. Like, and I have a girl on my team. Nobody says anything like, to me, it's just a generic fucking way to say, hey.
I don't know how many times, I don't know how many times the girls I coach look at each other and say, hey, bro.
Right.
They say. They ain't your bro.
Say, you know, but like, the, uh, the, my favorite, but like, those, those are three of the highlights from this fucking thing. And so I wanna go back only because now I learned that I can speak. And I might put myself lower on the name thing. So I can just tell everybody how stupid.
But everybody's dumbass opinions.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, so I, I also was thinking about it. Um, there's a lady on the board who, my wife thinks that it's, it's a lady. So somebody was talking about some church stuff. And then she clapped. And she's up on the board. And, uh, I don't care your opinion. Don't, David, I don't give a fuck about your opinion. The fact is, is you don't get to show that when you're supposed to be an impartial opinion, right? My opinion doesn't matter until I go and talk with my peers, right? Like, I'm a group of whatever. But like, you, you don't, you don't clap in support of this while you're, unless unless it's a, I love Genesee. We can all clap about that.
Congratulations, Genesee softball just won regionals.
Correct.
Clap, clap, clap.
We can all clap about that. Cause if not, guess what? If you, if you're happy that Hudsonville, granted, Genesee be Hudsonville. But if you're happy that Genesee won, no, don't be on my fucking board. We're on the wrong board. Okay? This is, we are all one. We are one. Okay? One is how I look at things. Okay? One. And it's not just my mindset, right? Cause I can go, and we know this from many of our talks, right? I can go either way. I will support or, or negate so many different things. And, uh, whatever, I seem fit. But my problem is, is right? Like I'm a, I'm a very true fan of democracy. Okay? I've lost votes. I've won votes. Am I upset when I lose votes? Hell yes. Am I happy when I win votes? Hell yes. But at the end of the day, as long as it's fair, I'm fine with the fucking outcome because I have to be, right? Like, and so, hey, if my area comes and says this, and this is what it is, as long as it's not hateful, hurtful, harmful, or whatever, I'm gonna look and say, hey, if every parent said, hey, it, it, you know, cause if you, if you think about it, David, if I, and here, let me ask this question. Okay? And here's what I find, I'm gonna tell you, I find this to be a very fair answer. We kinda talked about it. No, no boys should go into a girl's bathroom. No girls should go into a boy's bathroom. Okay? If we agree to put a millage into place, or if we have extra money in the budget, and we're gonna have two bathrooms put into this whole place. That's a unisex bathroom that has one stall. It has a locking door. And that's gonna be for anybody that wants to use it. Are you fine with that as a compromise?
Yeah, I'm great with that.
Okay, right?
That, that's a fair compromise.
Fair enough. Right? And so I'm going to support, but like some people will be like, no, I don't wanna, so I'm gonna tell you. There's people who are like, no, she should, he shouldn't be treated any different. Well, we think he's a girl or, you know, she's a guy. And okay, no, no, no. Okay. There's compromise that we can have, right? This isn't a fight that we should be having. We should figure out how to fix this issue.
Let me ask you something. Okay. You have a 12 year old girl.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Let's say Tina. Tina doesn't feel like a girl. Tina feels like a boy. Tina wants to be Tony. Does it affect you in any fucking way?
Not at all.
Does it mean anything to your life?
No.
If your daughter came home and said, hey, I saw Tina go into the boy's bathroom. What would you say to her?
My grandpa, we were on a fucking road trip and we went to McDonald's and he walked into the girl's bathroom, realized there was no urinals and still took a piss.
Yeah.
And that's all I'd say, right? Like, I, it doesn't.
It didn't change anything.
I'd look at Emerson and go, did Tina have a good piss? Right? Like, okay, great. I, what does it matter, kid?
What would you say if she's like, Tina told me that she's a boy and her name's Tony? What do you say?
Okay. Did Tony go into the bathroom with you?
Well, no.
Okay. He went into the boy's bathroom?
Yep.
Okay. Then he went to his bathroom. Cool. I, I'm never once gonna reach my hand out and dance to figure out if you're a fucking boy or a girl. Okay?
There are people that will. And that's gross. And that's gross.
It's fucked up, right? Like, never, if you come to me and you tell me your name's fucking Sally. And I'm gonna go, cool, Sally, this is gonna be really weird. I knew you as David. So I'm gonna let you know, David might come out, but I'm gonna try to fucking call you Sally, alright, Sally? From now on, you're gonna be Sally.
Your niece is a good example.
Yeah, well.
When she got hired here.
Yeah.
She sat Dawn down and said, listen. My pronouns are he, they. And Dawn was like, okay. And I I don't go by Jenica, I go by Phoenix.
Yeah.
And Dawn was like, okay. And Dawn told me and I'm like, cool. And I looked right at her and I said, listen, I'm gonna fuck that up a lot. Because I've known you since you were a little kid and your name was Jenica. I'm gonna do my best to call you Phoenix. I'm gonna do my best not to refer to you as a she, but I'm gonna fuck that up.
Well, and and here, here's the problem is, so then we go on vacation. Go on vacation and, uh. She didn't want Jenica or my mom to know.
Right.
So.
Now she has to be Jenica the entire vacation.
Like, alright, you're, so, what, you want me to call you she Jenica now? Then turn around and you want to be, and I, and so like, I'm, I don't play that game. Right? You commit and you commit when you want me to officially make you this. Okay, like, there's no, there's no flip flop whenever the fuck it's convenient for you. There's no whatever, right? Like, this isn't, I want to fucking do, like, no. This is how it's gonna fucking be, right? Like. And if you don't like, that's, I don't have to be part of that, right? Like, I, that's completely fine. Hey, and honestly, nine hundred percent of the time, sup, kid? It's all I ever say, kidding. Hey, hey, kid, what's going on? Oh, nothing much. Alright, cool, see you, kid. You know, I don't, I don't ever say fucking. You know, if I have to yell, be like, hey, Jake, get the fuck over here. That's about it, right? But like, I'm never, I don't care, right? I I don't ever think I say their names. Well, you know. I haven't seen my nephew. It could be, could be my niece from now on. I don't fucking know.
You know, talking about indoctrination for a second, I have this question for you, because I I saw this a few weeks ago. How many people do you think would be religious if they weren't introduced to religion until they were adults? Let's say out of a hundred people.
Tell their adults?
Yeah, so they don't know anything about religion, any religion, Muslim, Judaism, Catholicism, none of it.
Very hard. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say like twenty five percent.
Yeah, I'm gonna say probably somewhere between fifteen and twenty five people.
Yeah.
I mean, so the vast majority would go, yeah, no, I don't know.
Because, you know, I mean, I think, and and the weird thing is, is for me, and I'm gonna get, we're gonna get hate for this real quick. There's so many people that do bad things and then find God and think that it's their excuse to get over it, right? And that pisses me off.
Well, not only that.
My favorite was, I met, I'm at a church and. I, you know, the guy's got multiple felonies, I don't know, they're four type thing. Oh, hey, our new youth leader. Really? He's changed, he's come so far, he's found God and he's preaching it. So you know he's capable of it, huh? You're still allowing it, huh? And we're supposed to accept it, huh? Seems good, huh? I don't know, hard pass for me, dog.
Well, and I know that if you want people to believe things, you teach it to them young.
Very much.
So.
My kids in Spanish class.
I was just gonna bring that up. Your daughter's in Spanish emergent immersion classes and speaks, you know, Spanish in these classes. And by the time she graduates, she'll be very easily fluent. Because when you're a child, you're a sponge and you pick these things up very easily. So if you want to control. The masses, you control the information they are given. And one of the best controls out there is religion.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't matter what religion it is. I don't care. But that's how you control a mass of people is by religion. And then if you really want to control them, you point out boogeymen. Like, trans kids. And they're the problem. They're the ones you have to protect all of the children from.
Yeah.
Not the preacher that's pulling them in the confessional and doing things with them they shouldn't be fucking doing. But that little trans kid that just doesn't want to get their ass kicked. And these are the things I have major fucking issues with.
Well, and, you know. One thing that gets me. Is the amount of people that actually showed up. Was was great. I love seeing support. I am not a fan. And I don't know where to draw the age limit. Like, the guy that was next to me, I don't think he had any right being there, if you ask for my honest opinion. Yes, he was there for a reason. But if he was hired as security, right? That's fine. The fact that, like, he even said, hey, I'm not from the school district, I'm from, I'm here for this reason, and that's fine. But really, he had no reason being there, right? If you're not from my school district. Why are you fighting for my school? Like. Understand, you could do your protest and your support in any other way, write your letters, do all you got, like, this is my school board meeting. And again, he's on our team. Oh, it's like. And so, you know, hey, if you hire somebody that's professional in what they are and you're gonna. Pay for their time, sure, I get that. And I get volunteering, but like, really, this is our school board aspect of things, so. You know, I, and I, I say, I told my wife, you know, I I I'm here. Like, I go back to that, like, I was asked to do this job. I was not asked for anything else, like. If you wanted something else, if you want me to talk about how I feel, how I stand, how I do, whatever, that's a whole different story. If I, now that I've gone and done it once, like, I understand what I have the abilities to do and think and say, but really, like. This is what we're here, like, and and that's how I live my life. Like, I am here for this job and this job only, right? Like, when I go to a tenant. I am here for this job. If you want to have a conversation, that's up to you, but I, if I don't wish to, that's on me as well. You know what I'm saying? Like, granted, I'm not. I'm not that, like, I don't look at it as that type of a way. I strictly look at things as. Black and white, like, this is what, hey, we have a, we have a book, we have a book banned that's coming up. Do we want to talk? Like, this is what it should be talked about, to allow people to. And and the bottom of the page is what pissed me off, because the bottom of the page. I I think I have a photo. Let me read this quick if I can. Um, I'm pretty sure I can find it really, really quickly. It says, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public. For the purpose of conducting school district business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. This is time for the, there is time for the public participation during the meeting. Right? To me, that strictly states what this is. Anything else should never be allowed. My first setting should never be allowed. I'm not gonna lie about that. They should have said, hey. We're not here for that. We're not here for what your opinion. When, when the first guy got through and got to say his piece, when I got through to say mine, I knew that they were bullshit. I knew that the gavel wouldn't come down. I should have. You know, I should have been held responsible for my actions. And I wasn't, like, I'm not afraid to admit that, right? Granted, I didn't read that paper until later and also didn't know I signed up to speak, so, um. But my name got called and I said, well, gotta do this. And, uh. And then I read and I was, and and then my brain said, oh, I kind of fucked that up because I shouldn't have said anything, right? Like, that's not what I was there for. I. This is what I'm here for, right? It it's for the school board aspect of things. So, um, the other people. Again, they ask you to have a three minute grant. They've limited it to one full hour, which is amazing to me, but, um. You know, don't ask for people to only do three minutes. I get that there's a leniency if you have two extra words type thing, but really, that microphone should be set. You should have three minutes, cut it off, plain and simple, no questions asked. If you're gonna finish speaking, turn around and say whatever, and then they're gonna hold you into contempt or whatever they call it, right? Ask you to leave and. Because like, you know, I told my wife, I said, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the superintendent. What happens? What happens if I'm disruptive? What happens if I? Cause I, I have no, my intent next time is to tell people to go fuck themselves. With those words, okay? And what are they gonna do, right? Hey, sir, stop, blah, blah, you. Cool, I'm gonna stand and then are you gonna call the cops? My only concern is, hey, if I, if the cops come and I get kicked off the property. Do I get to still pick my kid up from school? Cause if I don't, then I, then I watch what I do, but if I have no consequences for my actions, then what do I care about, right? And that's how my brain thinks. I'm gonna get away with as much as possible until you stop, right? I'm like a child.
Yeah.
So.
Well, you know, and I I think that's where a lot of these problems are are coming from with the school boards is. The playbook. Conservatives wrote these playbooks a long time ago.
Yeah.
When Roe versus Wade got passed, their playbook was we have to overturn Roe at all costs. It didn't matter what it cost. We just had to overturn it.
Yeah.
And they chased it like a dog after a bone. And then they caught it and they still don't know what the fuck to do. And they basically decided, you know, twenty some odd years ago, that the way to get their opinions. More mainstream was to take over the schools. If they can take over the schools, they can control what children are learning. It's one of the reasons Betsy DeVos was the Secretary of Education for four years, because her big goal is. Charter schools, which are for profit and. Christian schools, which are also for profit. I mean, they'll say they're nonprofit, but we all know that's horse shit. Um, because they're charging kids, you know, six, seven, eight thousand dollars a year to go to school. That. Controls the information that indoctrinates the kids. Again. If you take an adult and you show them religion for the first time at eighteen, they're probably gonna tell you to piss off.
Right.
But if you take a three year old and you baptize them and they go to church every Sunday for fifteen years. They're gonna believe in whatever God you've thrown in their face, whether it's Jesus or Allah or. Odin or, you know, Vishna. It doesn't fucking matter. They're just gonna believe that because they don't know any other way.
Yeah.
You know, some of us, like, Mike and I have talked, you know, we both went to Catholic school.
So did I.
Well, not Catholic school, but Catholic church.
Yep.
And he went to Catholic school. I wasn't allowed because I was too clingy.
Sure.
And clinging, too clingy. I didn't tell you that?
No.
So my mom took me to St. Margaret's. And father. My mom works second shift, so I spent the majority of the time with my grandmother, growing up, you know, those first several years. And she took me and father basically said he's not ready for elementary school because he's too clinging to you. So my mother decided to send me to Cooper Elementary with my grandmother, who I was around all the time.
Yeah.
I wasn't clinging to her at all because I spent most of my time with her, you know, as a four year old.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, he's absolutely ready, to which my grandmother went back to St. Margaret's and ripped father a new asshole because she was so fucking pissed. And that ended. Catholicism for David.
Nice.
Which also allowed me to. Find a different worldview. We'll say it that way.
Yeah.
Because we no longer were a family that went to church. We didn't go to services. So I didn't necessarily not believe in God, but I didn't necessarily believe in God because it it wasn't presented to me anymore.
Sure.
And then at fourteen years of age, what was presented to me was George Carlin. And that was all she wrote, because he made a hell of a lot of fucking sense.
Yeah.
And it didn't matter whether he was talking about religion or government or stupid shit people do. Because those were some of my favorite things. Did you ever look at your watch? And then a few seconds later, you look at it again. And then you're looking at it a third time and somebody goes, what time is it? You go, I don't know. Because it's those little things that we all do that really ties us together. But then he would sit there and, you know, he would use words in ways I'd never heard before and and he would talk about. Religion being bullshit or, you know, businessmen being bullshit or the government being bullshit. And I'd be like. That makes a lot of sense. It made me very distrusting of authority.
Yep.
Because. All of a sudden, I was given a different worldview.
Hey, uh, you kind of brought up, just couldn't fit bullshit. And I I I'm a magician, so I love pen and pen and teller atheist, right?
Yeah.
Outspoken and, um, one of the guys last night said. Um, you know, without religion, what keeps us? You know, what what keeps us in check type of thing. And I remember Penn, Penn asking the question, you know, some lady's like. What stops us from raping and killing people? And he goes, common fucking decency. You like, are you, you you want to go fucking rape people? Like.
This is, this is always the question from the ultra religious.
Yeah.
Well, if you didn't have God, you would just be out here committing crimes.
No, I fucking wouldn't. I'm not an asshole, okay?
I wouldn't just punch you in the fucking face because you look like an idiot.
Right.
I might tell you you're a fucking idiot, but that would be the extent of my.
Yeah, solism.
I might look at you and go, lady, you're a fucking moron.
And so I I almost started cracking up laughing, like, while he's saying this or whatever, I was like. I I wanted to blurp out and be like, why aren't you raping people, bud? Why, like? Really? Like, is that what you want to do? Is the only reason you're part of God? Like, and that's what, like, next, if I go next time, I'm gonna stand up and I'm gonna, like, that's gonna be my speech. You, why are you not doing this? Is that what you want to do? The only reason you're not fucking raping people right now is because you fucking follow God? Like, Jesus, go get yourself fixed, buddy.
Well, that's just it. They. Religious people look at atheists as heathens. They're heathens and they're godless and they'll do all these horrible things. They worship Satan and they, you know, drink blood or whatever fucking shit they say. Whereas. I'm just a decent fucking human being. I don't have these delusions that I, you know, I should be sacrificing virgins and shit, okay? That doesn't enter into my fucking mind.
Yeah.
And if it enters into your mind, we have a bigger fucking issue here, okay?
Okay, and so I I know I didn't do the story justice, right? I didn't at all. I I. But I. I'm so, I would be so scared for my kid to go around this lady because her brain just thought of those types of things. It's like. Yeah, she understands that it's not normal, but like, holy shit, who just sits, thinks about this, like. Like, my brain just couldn't fathom the fact that somebody could make that up. I understand that people write these things, but like. And here, while she's talking about it, like, I've, I've, well, the book was read to me, A Child Called It, right? Kid gets beat up and does all, like, bias family and stuff, but like, and so I thought she was trying to get like that type of a thing banned and all that. And I was like. Alright, a- and then she just went, so, there's books like this. And and I was like, like. It just blew my mind because you could just quote it. And I told my wife, like, I was like. She just not want to get in trouble for reading, reading parts and not giving credit to the author in the right spot? Like, does she think that these people are judging her?
There was nothing in the.
On a grade of paper, like, did she not want to get hit by the publisher? Like. There was, it's sold to the public, you bought it, right? Or whatever. Now you own the rights to be able to talk this, like, blows my mind.
So I'm not gonna call this person out, even though I probably should. So there's a parent that I know because I'm close to their kid.
Yeah.
And he stopped watching Supergirl.
Okay.
You ever see Supergirl?
No.
Supergirl was on CBS and then it.
Okay.
You know, I don't know why he stopped watching Supergirl.
Cause it had a girl that was in a tight uniform.
So in the show, Supergirl's adoptive sister was a lesbian. And that was pushing the gay agenda on him. So he stopped watching it because it's too gay.
It was on the CW. There was no, like, what happened kissing?
Yeah, cool. Like, not gratuitous kissing, like kissing.
Yeah, like a pack.
Handholding.
Yeah.
They hugged. I I I can't remember a whole lot of making out or anything. I mean, it's a fucking superhero show.
Right.
Did, maybe was there some, make sure, maybe there was some making out.
Sure.
But it wasn't gratuit, it was on a fucking broadcast TV.
Yeah.
It wasn't on HBO.
Yeah, this wasn't Skinamax.
No. And and of course. I love this person's child dearly.
Yeah.
But this person knows what I think of her fucking father. Oh, I just said it was her. This person knows what I.
You said it was a kid on your team.
No, I didn't. I just said it was a kid I know. It was, it is not a kid on my team.
Okay.
Um, you know this person, actually.
Okay. Um, I, we'll talk about it off air.
Absolutely. And they know what I think of their father. I think their father's a fucking homophobe. He's a fucking idiot. He's an asshole.
Really?
Extremely fucking religious.
Okay.
But again, he'd be one of these indoctrinating assholes that's out there going, they're pushing it on me, they're pushing it on me. Or they just literally want to be fucking left, they just want the same rights as you do. I I asked you the question earlier. If. The trans kid goes in the opposite bathroom of what you think they should go in, how does it fucking hurt you?
Right.
Doesn't hurt me. Well, I think they just need to take a leak.
If anything, worst case scenario, right? Uh, a trans kid goes into the bathroom and I feel uncomfortable. I'm probably just gonna hold it for two extra seconds.
Exactly.
Or I'm gonna whip it out. Or I'm gonna whip it out and take a pee like a normal person, right? Cause let's say it happens the tenth time and I'm tired of holding it and I really can't hold it, I'm probably just gonna piss.
So you came up with the thing, you know, with Penn and Teller. And you're like, so without God, you'd be raping people. You ever noticed that the people that play these scenarios in their head, it's always a supposed boy going into a girl's restroom. I mean, you brought that up earlier too. Cause that's what they're afraid of is this boy's gonna go in a girl's restroom and they're just gonna rape women. Um, at that point, that's not a trans kid going in there. That's one of you motherfuckers.
That's, that's a person that is, right? And, and if you wanna fight, so bring that point up. So this guy stands up and you could tell he, it's his first time. He said it's his first time. And the only reason I know it's his first time is because he, he comes up into the, to the microphone. And he said, you know, I have a, an issue I'd like to bring up. I was talking to a friend's kid or my neighbor's kid, whatever it was, right? And he's forty something years old. He had to tell us. And he goes, oh, how's things going? He, he's like, I don't like it. Um, he has to get a pass from school to go home and use the restroom because she doesn't feel safe in the restroom. Okay. And his point was, well, there's kids in there vaping and doing other stupid shit. And beating up people or doing whatever, right? And he's like, yep. So I think the school, you know, they have security. They need to figure this out and they need to do stuff like that and blah, blah. And I was like, alright, so kids like him who doesn't feel safe even around his own gender, like they, again, the, the unisex bathroom where you lock the one thing and cool, there you go. But then all of a sudden it kind of hit him that he wanted to stand out. And so it was like an afterthought and he's like, oh yeah, hey, uh, guys shouldn't go into girls bathrooms, you know, and it just kind of like, I was like, hmm, so you had a totally different problem with the bath and then you wanted to be in the cool kids club and like you, you, you had actually, cause if that's happening, you're right, we have an actual thing we need to talk about, right? Kids shouldn't be vaping in the bathrooms. Kids shouldn't be doing drugs in the bathroom. Kids shouldn't be doing a gang jumping in in the bathroom, right? Like, these are not things that should be happening. And you're absolutely right. We should be doing something about that.
And, and is this happening and at what percentage and how often is this found?
Right. And again, so if, if you're telling me that this is happening, great, like, let's, yeah. Make a point to make sure we have some security with this, right? Like, and then he, you know, he's like, oh, with all this, all the teachers, we should have this. And I was like, let me ask you this question. So one of the big things that some conservatives have heard have said is, teachers should have guns. What is your feeling?
Absolutely fucking not.
Why?
So let, let's think back to when you and I coached together. Let's, let's go for people we didn't like. Let's say they acted out. And they had a gun. Did you bring yourself to kill him? Right. And that's the fucking reason.
So my reason, we go back to, and we talk about this whole time. I'm not gonna go sweep a floor because I wasn't hired for that. I'm not hired to be security for your kids. I'm not hired to babysit your kids. My job is to teach your kids and teach them what I know, teach them the best of my abilities, teach them in the ways that I see fit. I, I don't understand why these parents want teachers to be something that they're not, right? Like,
Because, well, basically, they just want all conservative teachers. They want all conservative teachers and they want unlimited guns. And again, let me ask you this. So you have a seven-year-old.
I do.
Do you think she would be more distraught over active shooter drills or a trans kid going in a bathroom?
Active shooter drills.
Why?
Cause she doesn't find guns to be safe. Let me give you an example. David, today I took my daughter to the public museum.
Yes, I, I saw that.
Okay. In my public museum, there is what I'll call old time town. So there's like rooms set up. So there's an old pharmacy and there was a guy in there giving his stuff, okay? He was talking about, so like, back in nineteen hundreds, medicine was like in bottles, okay? Big, not mason jars, but like glass bottles with tops. There was powders, there was things, they just had labels on them. This wasn't orange bottle pill things, like these pharmacists made prescriptions. They made medicine.
Like what a compounding pharmacy is now.
Exactly, yeah. So that they
Not to mention the fact that a lot of their medication was things like cocaine and heroin. Because it helps for pain.
So a- and, right, there was, there was all of this. So anyway, so then there's a, there's a, there's an old store, right? Um, I don't know the name of it. Um, but you could buy linens, you could buy your, your, um, putlery and, and china and shit like that. And they have that type of little thing. They have a market and it's apparently ten cents back in the day to buy, uh, uh, crackers, uh, saltines. Forty-two cents for a can of tuna, which was kind of expensive.
Yeah, that's a low expense.
I was like, I think tuna's still the same price. It might be, it might be a dollar now, but I was like, man, it hasn't really gone up that much if, if those are the prices. Um, and you know, so like eggs and they have, it's funny because they have pickled eggs and pickles on the counter, like in big jars. And I'm like, man, I could have fitted back then. But, you know, there's, and then, and there's a, there's a, I wanna call it a wood shop, but there is a wood shop that has like lacquers and stains and things like that. So like an old hardware stores would I call it? And then there is a, uh, there's a gunsmith, small little thing. And they're like, it's all caged, everything, everything's behind glass and stuff. So there's a bunch of, uh, double barrel shotguns, couple of shotgun. And there's, actually, it was really cool. They have all the, uh, the pellet sizes and like this ring that you can see. And then there's some guns and then there's, um, taps and all this stuff. And I was like, hey, look, this is how they make the, the, um, like stocks have like the, this grip and things like that. They stamp really cool designs and, uh, and the things. And she's like, huh. But anyway, so my daughter didn't want to go into the gun thing. David, do I own guns?
Yes, you do.
And my own daughter is afraid of them? And has never seen my guns. Which is freak, like, people don't understand this, like, and so I might get my daughter in there and I was like, no, you're gonna come look, you're gonna come have this. And she's like, oh, gun, blah, blah. And I was like, no, like irresponsible gun ownership is a problem, kid. Knowing how to use them, being responsible with them, taking care of what you have and knowing that, knowing what the use is for this, that's completely fine. Don't be afraid of a gun. Be afraid of people that don't know how to be responsible with a gun.
Again, you're not a liberal.
Very much not.
I'm very much a leftist. Are you afraid of, uh, more restrictive gun laws? Why?
Cause it doesn't affect me. Why? I mean, I don't own, I don't own a, a fully automatic because I'm not legally allowed to. I don't own a grenade because I don't know why, I mean.
Why, why doesn't more gun restrictions scare you? So to get a gun now? You don't have a CPL.
Well, I say, depending on how, how restrictions they are, right? Like,
Well, you don't have a CPL.
I do not.
So you find a gun you like.
I do.
How long does it take you to get the gun?
Um, depending on how I buy it.
Okay, let's say you
If it's a shotgun, it takes me, it takes me a time. I go into register, fill out the paperwork, it comes back within X amount of time and I can walk out with a shotgun.
Okay, let's say you go to a gun store and, and you're buying a nine millimeter. How long does it take?
Uh, three days. Well, I don't know because, so I've never bought one yet. Well, I have bought one from a gun store. Actually, I think I got, I don't remember if I got it that day or if I actually had to wait. But like, I know I bought one from, I bought a couple from friends handguns and I just go in, I get fingerprinted. I fill out my paperwork and I bring my buddy the copy and I walk out with the gun right then.
Okay. So let's say,
A day?
Let's say you had to wait two weeks. Do you give a shit? Let's say you had to wait a month. Do you give a shit? Let's say you had to wait three. Do you give a shit?
Maybe.
Maybe. Why?
Because we probably have a plan and I procrastinated too long. And my buddy said, hey, we're going shooting here and we need this for the competition. Now I don't have a gun to go.
Right. That's so inconvenience.
Inconvenience.
But not because there's extra.
I mean, how long does it take to get a fucking passport? There's more regulations on getting a fucking passport than there is to get a fucking gun.
It's harder to get a driver's license than it is to get a concealed pistol license.
I have to, you have to answer a hundred questions to get a driver's license.
I had to sit in a three-hour class and hit a target from ten feet with a twenty-two, with a twenty-two handgun.
That's super easy.
Ten feet. I could have spit on the fucking target. Yeah, you just had to hit it. I could have spit on the fucking target. I had never shot a gun in my life.
Really?
We got it because Aunt Sue wanted it.
That's right, yeah.
So I went and sat in the three-hour class with her. We shot at a target from ten feet. Done.
Gotcha. And, and so, yeah.
I remember shooting for the first time at Silver Bullet. And I had the wrong magazine to put in the wrong gun. And I couldn't figure out why the fuck it didn't fit. I went and asked one of the guys, he goes, are you sure you should be shooting this? And I'm like, well, fucking no, but I got a CPL. How scary is that?
Completely, right? Like, but, you know, I say, when it comes down to it, like, if, if you're talking about, I have to wait longer, if you have to, if you have to make sure that my background is what it's supposed to be. I mean, dude, if you have a felony, you can't fucking vote, but somehow you can.
You can own a gun.
Oh, you can't, but I mean, you can go, you can go get one.
There are places that you can. Texas has turned into an open carry state. You can just open carry any fucking time you want. Doesn't matter what's going on.
Michigan's an open carry state.
No, no, this is different down there, though.
Oh, okay.
Like, you don't have to pass anything, do anything. There's, it's fucking the Wild West out here. I'd have to look into what the change was, but Abbott wants it to be the most gun-heavy state in the, the nation. Why?
Oh, and I say, right? I mean, we, we, you know, there's laws against road rage, right? I mean, because, because you're potentially harming other people and things like that. But we can't have this type, like, but you're allowing people to carry this when we know that there's anger issues, when you know that people don't react and are not responsible.
They removed mental health restrictions. And then they watered on fucking mental health.
Which is insane.
If you're not mentally well, you shouldn't have a fucking pistol.
Agreed, right? Like, y- y- you can't, blows my mind, right? And, and I don't remember. It's been so long since I bought a handgun. Cause I, I heard it used to be three days or whatever, cause
I think it is still three days.
Because you have to, and, and they put that law into effect or whatever because too many people were going out buying a gun and going to kill somebody the same day.
So th- this is the argument that always pisses me off. Uh, Chicago's a gun-free zone.
Yeah, it is.
And, well, then why are people getting killed in Chicago all the time? It's because they're bordered by two states with the most relaxed gun laws. You can go to Indiana and just buy a fucking pistol out the back of a goddamn car, go to Chicago and shoot people. There's no, they don't give a shit about waiting for anything because they're highly conservative and they just want to push as many guns as possible. So that's great that Chicago's a gun-free zone. But they don't do anything to keep Chicago safe because they can't. Because all you gotta do is drive twenty minutes to Indiana, get your fucking gun, come back and shoot everybody.
Right. And, uh, no, it's like, you know, I, I, I don't know. There's a, there, there's so much, there's so much going wrong with how people are thinking. And again, you and I don't think the same as everybody else, but we don't need to, right? We just need everybody to be
We try to be educated on issues.
Correct.
Because a- again, I don't know if this is a fear for you, but my biggest fear is to look like an idiot.
It's huge.
That's my biggest fear. That causes me more anxiety than anything. I will literally not open my mouth if I'm not sure I'm right. Because I don't want you to prove that I'm a fool.
I can see that.
So I'm not talking about shit that I don't have some basis of knowledge on. Because I don't want you to go, man, you're, I can't fucking believe you just said two plus two is eighteen. You're a fucking moron. That would tear me apart. Case in point. Growing up, the term of endearment around my house was dummy. And Dawn and I had been together probably, shit, it was at least ten, twelve years. And my mom would always call up and go, hey, where's dummy? And it really bothered me. It always bothered me, but I never said anything. And I never said anything to my wife, but she fucking knew it bothered me. And she ripped my mother a new one one day over calling me dummy.
Really?
Yeah, just fucking went off on it. And like two weeks later, my mother started bitching at me about Dawn yelling at her about that because she knows that I don't care. And I was quiet. And she goes, what? And I went, it's always bothered me. I, I don't like it. She goes, well, you know, I don't think you're stupid. I said, but do I? Because, you know, for
Fifty years.
You've called me a dummy. Well, I don't really feel that way. Great. I don't know that. Because all you've done for my entire life is go, hey, dummy. And, you know, when people do these things, that's what you're left with, you know? I think I'm highly intelligent. But I don't know if other people think I'm intelligent. So if they call me stupid, that puts that doubt in my mind of, did I say something dumb? Did I do something dumb? Am, am I an idiot? I wanna talk about this. So we know that I have an employee here I don't like. Because I'm a baby and a child. And again, I'm not gonna deny that I'm a baby and a child. I'm going to deny that the reason this person thinks I'm a baby and a child is valid. And I don't know if I told you the story, I'm, I'm at practice one day. And I had actually had a conversation with my catcher, Maddie, about, you know, people overreacting to shit. And she goes, yeah, that person acts like a baby. I said, well, some people might say the same thing about me. She goes, no, they wouldn't. And I went, actually, and I didn't tell her what happened, but I'm like, I actually was called a baby and a child. For stupid reasons. She goes, that person must be an idiot. I'm not saying that. And then like two days later, I'm at practice and I'm talking to Natalie, one of my pitchers. And I'm like, you know what I've learned? And she goes, what? I said, I've learned that you're like my pacifier. You ever see a baby throw a hissy fit? Cause they can't have their pacifier. She goes, yeah. I said, that's what you are to me. I don't necessarily need you to pitch. But if I have you in my back pocket, I'm calm and I'm happy. But if I don't, I'm a fussy baby. And I went up to Maddie and I went, yes, I am a baby. But anyways, back to my story, um, Dawn says to me, hey, so-and-so really wants to talk to you, really wants to apologize, blah, blah, blah. I don't wanna fucking hear it. I don't give a shit. This person does not rate on my give a shit scale anymore. And she had said to me a couple of weeks ago, she's like, so is this just never gonna happen? I'm like, I don't see a time I'm ever gonna wanna have this conversation. And somebody better tell this person that. Because if they try to have the conversation with me, they're gonna see how big of an asshole I am. And she came home from work later that day or the next day. And she goes, yeah, I talked to so-and-so and I basically said, listen, you're never gonna have the conversation with David. He doesn't wanna hear it. It just is what it is. He will be a professional when he's near you, but you two do not have a relationship. And the person goes, oh, well, I wasn't expecting that. And Dawn goes, it, it's the way it is. You're just gonna have to deal with it. And I went, okay, I guess I'll just have to deal with it in my own way. Right? Cause I had to deal with, I'm a baby and a child in my own fucking way. And now the way I deal with it is go fuck yourself.
Pretty much it.
And I mean, I'm not trying to be a fucking asshole, but if you talk to me now, gonna be an asshole.
It's like, right? I mean, you don't get to have everything you want, right? You say, this isn't, this isn't life. You don't get to have your cake and eat it too, okay?
It's not Burger King. You can't have it your way.
Have it your way.
So sometimes we're assholes.
Let's say, I, I, I think that was a, a fun little get to know us, uh, story time. As always, everybody, thanks so much for listening. Please like, subscribe, share, tell your friends, tell your family. Shout out now that I'm completely out of Bush Light Peach. Uh, those were great. Thank you so much.
I'm glad you enjoyed them. Um, we will back, be back with you next week, whether it's next week in real time or next week, whenever you're listening to this episode, when we put it up. Um, thanks for joining everybody and we'll talk to you soon.